Welcome, everybody, to the January, February 17th, 2010 council meeting. Well, Greg, Jason Bazwell, please come forward and do the invocation.
Our heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we thank you for this blessed day. Lord, we ask that you'll be with us during this time, Lord. We pray, Lord, that you'll give the guidance, Lord, that the council needs, Lord. Give us all the understanding, Father. Continue to bless us and keep us in your will. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, February 17th, 2010, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and council. I will be happy to call roll for the February 17th, 2010, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the clerk's office prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood is excused today and out of town. Councilmember Bert Hewitt will preside this evening as Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey. Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tartt.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like to welcome everyone here for the meeting this evening, and please bear with me as I try to get us through this thing. Will the clerk please sound the next item?
The next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 10-1049.
Are there any items to be considered? Do we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda. Item number 10-1049.
Second the motion.
We had a motion to approve the meeting agenda by councilperson Thurman and seconded by councilperson Lusk. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please sound the next item?
And the next item is public comment.
Is there any public comment?
Yes, there is. John Bratton, representing Bethany Green, HOA.
All right. I think I need to make a statement real quick before that. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor, pro tem, and the city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or city council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a public comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor, pro tem, or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone, stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Mr. Bratton.
Thank you, council. My name is John Bratton. I live at 440 Bethany Green Cove in the Bethany Green Development, and I'm president of the Bethany Green Homeowners Association. And I'm here tonight to give a shout-out to the council and staff. As some of you might know, we live right across the street from the Kings Ridge School, and there was an intersection there at Bethany Bend and Bethany Church Road that was intended for no left turn, with a little island and that sort of thing, right outside our development. And there were a number of illegal turns being made by big SUVs coming out of Kings Ridge, not by Kings Ridge necessarily, but by a number of people using that. And so we had petitioned to have a modification to that intersection put into effect. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bethany Green residents and the neighbors along the road there at Bethany Church Road to say thank you to a number of people, Julie Zoner Bailey, Alan Tartt, Bert Hewitt, Chris Lagerblum, and the staff who responded admirably to our requests and had to put up with our many, hey, what's the status of subsequent emails. And we're very appreciative of that, for the corrections that were put into that intersection. I'd also like to thank Sergeant Adrian Simonowski and the Milton Police Officers, who even before those changes went into effect, had some patrol people sitting there, kind of looking just to make sure. And our residents are very appreciative, and we thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No more public comments, sir.
Moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk sound the items?
First item is approval of the January 20th, 2010, regular council meeting minutes. This is agenda item number 10-1050. Second item is approval of financial statements for the period ending January 2010, agenda item number 10-1051. Third item is approval of a contract for survey of Cogburn Road Bridge replacement for $5,740, agenda number 10-1052. Approval of a contract with Georgia Tax and Regulatory Solutions LLC is our fourth item. This is agenda item number 10-1053.
Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by councilperson Tartt and seconded by councilperson Longoria. There's no discussion on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to the reports and presentations, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
First item is presentation by Milton Public Safety Fund, presented by Jan Fowler, Milton Public Safety Fund.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, Hewitt, and the city council and staff members. My name is Jan Fowler. I'm president of Milton Public Safety Fund, and on behalf of the fund, we'd like to present a check for $2,370 to the city for the purchase of some Nomex fire safety hoods, which are protective hoods that our firefighters wear. And this was a new item that the fire service had requested. It's an upgraded type of a hood for them, so it gives them added protection when they're out there protecting us and doing their thing. And so we're happy to be able to present that to them.
Well, thank you very much, and we'd like to come down as a council and take that check from you.
Okay.
And I'm sure Jason will take a photo of it, and I'll make some remarks afterwards.
Another one of our board members. Thank you, Alan. Thank you. (inaudible). Yeah.
(inaudible).
Jason wants to get one. Wait a minute.
Jan, please pass on, and Bob, pass on to y'all's group, how much we appreciate the efforts that y'all have done. I know that y'all have been here a couple of times before doing this, and look forward to seeing you again. Will the clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of a resolution to attach a section called supplemental plans.
Sue, you can give another presentation.
Presentation of Tree City USA Certificate of Recognition. Lynn Tully, Community Development Director.
I'm pleased to announce that we were recently given and recognized by the Tree City USA program as a national tree city community, and the National Arbor Day Foundation actually gives out this recognition in cooperation with the U.S. Forestry Service and the state foresters. We are one of 3,400 communities across the nation to receive this recognition, as well as only one of 130 in Georgia. So it's fairly distinguished. I credit the majority of that work to the Tree Committee and to our own staffer, Mark Law, who also was very instrumental in getting us promoted for us. And I would also like to point out that he's been selected to go to the governor's office and watch while the governor signs his Arbor Day proclamation tomorrow. So big kudos on that one. But if I could present this to the mayor, pro tem.
We can all go down there.
And allow Mark to come up, and any members of the Tree Committee.
Are there any members of the Tree Committee here? Well, I'd like to say to Mark, please pass on our thanks to the Tree Committee, and thanks to you for all the efforts you've put forth for this. And the preservation of trees in our community is important to all of us, and I know that you take that to heart. There are no items under public hearings, first presentation, or zoning agenda. Moving on to unfinished business, will the city clerk please sound the item?
First item is approval of a resolution to attach a section called supplemental plans to the partial plan update of the City of Milton 2008 to 2028 Comprehensive Plan, agenda item number 10-1047, presented by Lynn Tully, Community Development Director.
Recently, the council did approve a partial plan update to be submitted, which replaces the focus Fulton 2025 plan, but it did not get referenced, but did not specifically include the other supplemental plans that would typically follow along with that. And so what we are introducing here is a resolution which calls out each of those plans specifically. We'd like to note that it does not supplant any of the current overlay zoning districts or their guidelines, and so those are separate and are still contained within our zoning ordinance. But this does include the Crabback Crossroads Plan approved June 4th, 2003, the Birmingham Crossroads Plan and Development Standards approved March 3rd, 2004, Maintaining Rural Character in Northwest Fulton County, Georgia Plus Appendices, also known as the Rural Preservation Ordinance, approved December 5th, 2001, the Milton Trails Plan approved July 2007, and the 2009 Milton Transportation Plan approved December 21st, 2009. So we would like to request your approval of this resolution.
Does the council have any questions for staff? Nobody? All right. Is there a motion and a second?
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve a resolution to attach a section called supplemental plans to the partial plan update of the City of Milton 2008-2028 Comprehensive Plan, agenda item 10-1047.
I'll second it. Motion.
Me, too.
Is there any council discussion?
One quick comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank staff for making sure that some of those attachments and things clearly reflected all that needed to be there. So just thank you for your effort in that detail and attention to detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve a resolution to attach a section called supplemental plans to the partial plan update of the City of Milton 2008-2028 Comprehensive Plan. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Moving on to new business, will the city clerk sound the first item?
Approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 081263, a resolution to create a citizens' advisory committee for City of Milton concept plans for the intersections of Birmingham at Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence, agenda item number 10-1054, presented by Carter Lucas, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, the original resolution that created the citizens' advisory committee, who has been appointed to assist with the development of the concept plans for the intersections of State Route 140 and New Providence and the New Providence-Providence 372 intersection, anticipated completion of that committee in December of 2009. This amendment, since we didn't get started until January of 2010, this amendment merely extends the date of their completion either to the termination of their obligation under that original resolution or to the end of the term of the appointing council person, whichever may come first.
All right. Does the council have any questions for staff? Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem. Could you provide us a kind of an update? I mean, we get a lot of questions, I'm sure the rest of the council members do as well, on the status of those intersection improvements, and that money has been an issue, and then some other things have been an issue as well. What are the, what is kind of the projected timeline?
Well, funding is in place. The issues with the HPP, or High Priority Project funding, have been resolved with GDOT, and we're currently in the concept design phase. We've actually had one meeting with the CAC and meet with them on a monthly basis as we work our way through the concept. So we'll have the February meeting tomorrow night, actually. We'll have a meeting in March and a meeting in April with that committee. After that, we, I think, are anticipated to come before council in May or June with the concept plan. And then we'll be moving forward with environmental and right-of-way documents. Overall, the project completion is currently scheduled for October of 2013 for completion of construction.
Wow. Go ahead.
Carter, the funding, could you go over that again to describe what's included in that funding? Is it just for conceptual plans, or is it design development and right-of-way?
The funding takes it all the way through construction. The current contract with the consultant takes us through the concept development stage. Once we get through that and have an approved concept plan, we'll contract for the actual construction documents and right-of-way documents after that. But the funding that we have in place, or are getting in place, takes us all the way through construction.
Does it include the purchase of right-of-way land, though?
Yes, ma'am.
It does include that? Okay.
The concept phase will really lay out how much right-of-way is required, and will really better define the overall schedule from an environmental and right-of-way acquisition standpoint, too.
Will we proceed with right-of-way acquisition as soon as those plans are completed?
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Bailey?
Thank you. Carter, just a quick question. The 2013, I'm assuming that that is an estimate for both intersections?
Yes, ma'am. They're both running concurrently.
Okay. Thank you.
And do we currently have a full board? We have seven members on that board?
For the, yes, ma'am.
For the intersection, very good.
Great. Are there any other further questions? Is there a motion and a second?
I move that we approve a resolution, amending resolution number 081263, resolution to create a citizens' advisory committee for City of Milton concept plans for the intersections of Birmingham at Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence, agenda item number 10-1054.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 081263, a resolution to create a citizens' advisory committee for the City of Milton concept plan for the intersections of Birmingham at Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence, which was made by councilperson Longoria and seconded by councilperson Thurman. Is there any further council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
A resolution, amending resolution number 1001128, a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Ethics Committee. This is agenda item number 10-1055. We have an at-large appointment by Mayor Joe Lockwood. Appointee is Lisa Colley, and for District 4, councilmember Hewitt is bringing forward appointee Carl Haas.
All right. Joe has asked me to read something to introduce Lisa Colley to us, and I am just going to read it right here. Lisa and her husband Frank have two children that have been Milton residents for the last several years. She has also been very active as a volunteer, working for the good of our community. I would like to thank her for her willingness to step up and help by serving on this board. Joe Lockwood. Do we want to do these both together or separately? How's the best way to do this?
I would recommend we do each one separately, throw in motion both.
Does the council have any questions in this appointment?
I do have one question, just out of the city attorney. These members are being appointed, and obviously there's an ongoing case right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be training them on our ethics ordinance? Because I believe everyone else on the board has already been trained, including on conflicts of interest and when they might need to recuse themselves if they've had prior instances of personal support for candidates?
Once the members are appointed and on the board, then certainly I will advise those members with respect to their obligations, both under the ordinance and under our own ethics ordinance, their responsibilities as well. Yes, I can affirm that to the council.
And will you be training both of them in this intersection for both, though?
Well, the primary part of training with respect to the ethics ordinance itself will be to provide them a copy of the ordinance and allow them to review it, so they know exactly what is expected of them and the standards with respect to a hearing that is about to occur. But yes, ma'am, I will do that.
Councilperson Lusk?
The ordinance does not specifically address issues of ethics violations. Specific issues of ethics violations.
Well, the ethics ordinance contains both narrow and broad ethics considerations that apply to myriad situations, and of course, we'll go over that as we do with all members.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Colley to the Milton Board of Ethics Committee?
I'm happy to put forward a motion that would support Mayor Lockwood's appointment of Lisa Colley under the resolution, amending resolution number 10-01-128, a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Ethics.
Second the motion.
All right. We have, is there any council discussion? We have a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 1001128, a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Ethics Committee, and this one is for Ms. Lisa Colley. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Can we just go on in, and I can introduce?
Do yours and then swear in both.
I'm pleased to announce Carl Hayes is my Ethics Board Committee member appointment. Carl and his wife, of 17 years, Paula, live here in Double Creek with their three children. Carl's a Boston native, but has been in Georgia for around 16 years, the last seven here in Milton. Carl had his own IT consulting firm and is currently employed as a senior program manager with AT&amp;T. Carl worships with his family at St. Thomas Church and is active currently in past and hopeful middle school PTA and many youth sports. So I'd like to introduce Carl Hayes as my Ethics Board appointee. Do we have any questions for staff? Would someone care to make a motion?
I move that, yeah, I move that we accept Carl Hayes under the resolution, amending resolution number 1001128, a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Ethics Committee, agenda item number 10-1055.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution. That's a lot of resolutions. We have a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 10-01-128, a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Ethics for Mr. Carl Hayes. It was, the motion was brought forward by councilperson Longoria and seconded by councilperson Thurman. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. If I could get both of y'all to step forward, y'all do the swearing-in. Do we do them separately or together?
You can do them together.
Okay. Why don't y'all come around here and raise your right hands and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Ethics Board Committee member.
The Ethics Board Committee member.
Of this city.
Of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And as always, we are thankful that they've stepped forward to do this and appreciate all of our volunteers that serve in many capacities. All right. Moving on to the mayor and council reports. I have nothing to report. Does anybody else on the city council have something they would like to report? Moving on to staff reports.
Thank you. I'll touch on a couple of things before we move into the published one that we have that Carter is bringing forward, which was a bring-forward from the workshop of last Wanted to just bring you up to speed on a couple of different things. I emailed councilmember Thurman, but I guess I'll share it with the group. We were officially, and finally, this was one of those things that I turned over to Linda miraculously, she got it done in a day when it took me, it seemed like, three months to get it accomplished. But we have been accepted and approved into the volunteer program, Give a Day, Get a Day, with Walt Disney World. That came through this afternoon. If you happen to search that site, you won't find us pop up until tomorrow. I guess their computers are fresh overnight. The email I got said, wait till the next business day before you check. But we have been approved for that. I also want you to know today that we have registered, and you'll probably, you'll see an image on our website that deals with the census. I sent in the initial paperwork today to register the City of Milton as a partner for the 2010 census and hope that that brings some information our way quicker. More information on that as that gets closer, but we've already started to create a web presence, trying to get the word out as it relates to the census. There's a tab now at the top of the page that will direct people to the right information if they want to learn about the census that is happening here shortly. Councilmember Longoria, I want you to know that we looked into some of the issues that you asked about yesterday with respect to the business that is transferring locations in the City of Milton. I reached out to them, to Mr. Gray, today by telephone. I haven't received a phone call back, but... I haven't received a phone call back, but staff has worked on that today and I think we'll have a solution that encourages his continued operation in the city of Milton. And there's actually a lot of different things that we found in the ordinance today that are just transferable, which is nice. So I wanted to provide that update to you. I've got two other staff members here tonight to give kind of brief updates and more or less just distribute some information to you, more for you to take with you and digest tonight. And then we'll bring these items forward at a workshop for further discussion. I've had councilmembers ask some questions about the status of Milton's defined benefit. The human resource director's here and has a substantial bit of information that he's been working on over the last several months and kind of a status update that we'll send with you tonight. As well as Stacy, I've had some requests for some actual documented numbers as to how we have arrived at the savings that we have publicly stated in our transition away from the CH Two M Hill contract. And we're providing that information to you tonight by departments that you can actually see in the line item, summary of each department's budget, where those savings are anticipated to be and how we arrived at that number. So these are really just going to be two things. We could talk about them tonight if you want, but I really think it's probably better that you take the work that we've put together, take it away, read it, ask us questions, and then we'll bring it back forward at a workshop in March if there's any further discussion on it. Just want you to have it at your fingertips. In addition to that, I've had several councilmembers ask, as well as talked with the mayor, about trying to schedule some type of a council retreat. And we're ready to do that. As you recall from the last one, we did the hardest part of the whole thing with picking two days. And we spent almost a month picking two days, but we would need to start that process. Not only do our time, does our time have to match up, but also the time of the facilitator that we want to conduct the retreat. So the way we did this before was we picked a couple of dates and sent it out and tried to generate consensus. I think we got lucky that we finally did get everybody together. What I'm kind of looking for in the sense of guidance tonight, if I'm looking for guidance, is whether a two-day retreat during the week works better for you. What we decided to leave before, and I forget what days those were, but I want to say we picked one day during the week and then also one weekend day. That seems to not influence everybody's work week entirely, not influence everybody's weekend entirely, but was kind of a cross sampling of the two. The third option, obviously, would be to try to do a Saturday, Sunday. The other option we have is to consolidate it into a day. So I'm kind of looking for some of your feedback as to if we do a two-day, and I think probably two days seems to work the best to get something accomplished that we can, you know, start mid-morning one day and almost finish right after lunch the second day. And we have that opportunity not only to engage during the formal course of the retreat day, but also some of the interactions I think are valuable that occur amongst the council and the staff through even just a dinner conversation. And, you know, sometimes you get some of the best information in that format. So Friday, Saturday probably seems to, either Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, Monday, although I hate to do stuff on Sundays unless the council just directs me to look for those two days, is picking a couple of Fridays, Saturdays and emailing that out to everybody and just trying to generate some consensus on availability. Is that a place that people would be willing to start, I guess, is the question I'll ask?
I think so. I think, and personally for me, that a weekend day and a weekday seem to work best, but I don't know how that works with everybody else. But I do agree with the overnight, you know, gives us a chance to bond as well.
How soon are we looking? Are we looking to do it within the next two months, within the next three months, the next month?
We're probably into April or May at this point before we could, and part of that is not only picking the days, but is actually securing an agenda with a facilitator that's meaningful. You know, we could put together an agenda in a matter of minutes and everybody spend two days together and we accomplish nothing. And I don't know that that's necessarily
So still a few months out, basically.
But we're still, yes. And I realize we need to be that far with several of your schedules, that you book up fast. And we need to be a couple of months out, but I just want to kind of bring it up as the first part of the discussion, just so it's not forens, if you get an email from me later this week or the first part of next week what it's about. And once we get some ideas on facilitators, and there's a couple of different options that we have, I'll also get that to you by email rather than talking about it tonight. Who I think would be a decent facilitator. Having said that, let me let Stacy and Sam do what they came to do. Sam can give just kind of a quick snapshot of what he's put together on the pension program. Stacy, a quick snapshot on the package you'll see from her. Is she still here? Oh, she is still here. And then we'll move on to Carter's published, published agenda item.
Good evening. As Chris summed up, I've been looking at pension numbers, defined benefit, and the defined contribution that the city offers our employees, looking at some, the state of it, for lack of a better word. And in a summary, I think that we're in pretty good shape right now. But this is something we probably need to look at on a regular basis. So with Chris's suggestion, I think the best thing for me to do is probably just hand this out and hopefully look forward to coming back at a work session in March or possibly April and going over it in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan has a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Has there been any thought to survey employees on their satisfaction with the plans and their benefits?
At this point, we have not done that, but that's certainly something we could incorporate if it's something you're interested in seeing some information on. Sure. We have a survey instrument that we can put out pretty quickly to them. Let me get that.
All right. Thank you very much. If you'll pass that up, then we can all review that at our leisure.
As Chris mentioned, I was asked to kind of put together some support for the numbers that we've provided to the public as far as the savings that we should realize in the transition away from CH Two M Hill. We've published that we should see a savings of at least $1.3 million in the first year. And I say first year because there's a lot of one-time costs that we incur in the first year, such as vehicles and IT equipment, software, things like that. As well as, we also have three months of payments that we had to pay to CH Two M Hill in the first year. Second year savings, we are anticipating another $1 million in savings without having all those additional one-time costs and the CH cost. So I do have some support here for you. If you would digest it and if you had any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Stacy. One more before I get to Carter. Carter, you're going to get on here in a second, I promise. One other thing that we want to talk tonight is about a community choices technical assistance grant opportunity that we have. And Lynn has brought some concepts, wants to bring some concepts forward to you tonight and different options of what we might apply for this particular grant for. A little bit of background as to what the grant is. It's not a money giving out grant. It's a grant that provides technical assistance. So in the true sense of, we always think of a grant means that we're going to get a check and we're going to be able to then buy something with a check and we're going to match funds with it and all that good stuff. That's not the type of grant that this is. This is technical assistance grants. So now if we give Lynn maybe an opportunity to describe what this opportunity is and then some of the concepts that the staff has come up with as options for what we might apply for. I think there's four. We'll go through those and then if anybody has any other ideas that they might want to see us research or look into before we make application, that's the guidance we're looking for with respect to this.
Thank you. As Chris mentioned, this is an ARC Quality Growth Implementation Program. So it's a technical assistance program. It does aim to address issues of quality growth. So any priorities that we would put forth or presentations that we would put forth for this grant would have to relate to some of these quality growth initiatives. In light of that, the staff has kind of brainstormed and tried to come up with maybe four potential ideas for this program. If we could get from you some idea indications of whether or not you think that those are appropriate, or if you've got kind of a, could put them in a priority order, that would help us quite a bit in narrowing it down so that we can get this put together such that we could have maybe a resolution for you all to approve on March the first in support of it and we can get that in the mail. So in that vein, let me start with idea number one was sign ordinance revision and recommendations, having them look over our sign ordinance, make some recommendations based on what we have seen in the past, the variances that have been asked for, some of the other technical problems we've come up with, some of the problems the business community has come up with. So that's number one. Number two, detailed in-depth land use study and master planning for the Highway Nine corridor. That's something we know that at some point is going to come up as an issue that we need to address, and this might be an opportunity to get a little extra labor for that. So that's number two. Number three is to recommend an economic development program or some guided policies to target filling vacant space. We know that this is an issue that is becoming more and more apparent, something that even the North Fulton Chamber of Commerce today is trying to come up with some ways to address this. All ideas are not necessarily new, but sometimes we need to put them in one package. And so hopefully, if we put that forward, we could find a way to package these policies such that we can make them specific for Milton and the types of businesses that Milton is looking for. And then number four is preparing a tax assessment audit to examine and highlight properties which are coded or assessed improperly by Fulton County. We're finding that as we look in the tax records, there are things that appear to be coded incorrectly and very well may be then assessed incorrectly. So this might be a way to help us with our tax rolls. Do you all have any other ideas or any questions or one of them jumping out at you?
I would say, starting off, there are two of them that jump out to me, although I think, I think all of them have merit. The Highway Nine Master Plan and the Economic Development Part seem to be, would be rank for me up there towards number one. I know we've had some citizens inquire recently about the economic development aspect of it, and we're always looking at the Highway Nine corridor. The sign ordinance is something I think that we do need to review, but that's might be something that we could do in-house, a little bit easier than some of these other things. And the assessment audit, it would probably would be number three on my list. Anybody else wants to share their thoughts?
I would agree.
Number three or number four?
I think it should be number three because that might need some, a little more technical.
Four would be the sign ordinance.
Yeah, but, because I think that's something we can do more internally on the sign ordinance.
I'll be brief. I second what you just said. To the councilperson Loz?
I'll comment on that. I think the sign ordinance is an integral part of the economic development issue. And I think the sign ordinance has a large bearing on developing these vacant buildings and encouraging more commercial development in the city. So I think, I don't think we ought to diminish the importance of reviewing the sign ordinance in that respect.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. Do we have an idea of how out of whack or out of sync our current tax rolls are with what should be reality? Because that's one of those things, it's a return on investment, how much time do you put in versus how much you get back? I mean, if we're within, you know, 1%, a lot of work there isn't going to yield too much, but, you know, if it's a 10% or 15% thing, that's, could be significant. So it seemed to me it would warrant the effort that we put in there. But I don't know, is there a way to do a sanity check on our tax rolls?
There's a way to do a sanity check on the tax rolls with respect to some other local municipalities and other counties that have done some revenue enhancement type programs. And it's funny you bring that up because I spent a couple hours today actually looking at some revenue enhancement opportunities, not only with respect to tax rolls, but with cell tower audits and all these other different things that I think now is probably appropriate to take off the shelf. I don't have an answer for you tonight. I can't tell you. I think it's in whack, out of whack. I can tell you that it's been out of whack in other cities with big enough dollars that I think we need to do something about it. And I say that just to say that I don't have an answer for you tonight, but that will be a priority coming out of my office very soon.
When I was in Texas, there were several businesses that basically came in and for a percentage of what was recovered would do all the legwork to make those kind of things happen. And they usually had a great acid test for figuring out, was it worth their trouble because they were making the investment of the energy and manpower? So that might be something we could
I've explored a little bit of that today. And that's one of those things, too, that even in the first year, if for a percentage of the return, they uncover some of these discrepancies, it's a return on our investment than every year after that.
Right.
So all I can say is, I wish I had a punchline for you tonight, but this was one of the things I worked on today. So
I was just voicing my reasons why I would tend to float that up to the top
Sure.
because it's real money, so potentially, so.
Well, what does, Ms. Tully, what do you think with your resources that you have? How would you perhaps prioritize these?
Based on the goals of the program, I think they would pro, and the past projects that they've actually awarded, I think that they would probably be very intrigued by the Economic Development Program, particularly it's something a little bit different, but still on target with their quality growth directives. So
Okay.
That one particularly.
Karen?
Would the Economic Development Program, would that actually look through our ordinance systems to see what parts of the ordinances may not be business friendly and may need to be adjusted? Would it do that kind of thing also, or is it just going to tell us how to try to attract business to the area, which is what the chamber really does?
It could. I think it depends on how we craft the scope of the
Because, I mean, I would love to have it go through and actually look at our ordinances, like the sign ordinances, to see what changes may need to be made to make the area more friendly for businesses as part of that process.
Okay. Anybody else have anything further?
One, I think everybody's input has been very valuable. Ms. Tully, to your point about the ARC, obviously they've got some areas that they tend to be or have greater experience within. So I think to your point, where do we have the greatest opportunity to perhaps seek and get the actual grant? I would think that also perhaps on that land use planning for Highway Nine, because that's something that they've, one, looked at historically when we were doing the LCI. And I think that some of the folks that are senior to ARC, I think that they were interested in that LCI, so that may be another thing, because they've already got some existing knowledge about that, then looked at it. I think that there was a propensity to want to approve that LCI, but they had some other things that were challenging. So maybe this is one of those areas where they can lever their prior knowledge and some prior involvement. So just a thought. It would seem to me that the Economic Development Program obviously could go hand in hand with the land use, because again, as we look at land use for Highway Nine, that's one of the areas where we have vacancies. And we also have a land use planning process that will be an area where we want to attract those businesses. My only hesitation on the sign ordinance is that I think, and I think to Councilmember Hewitt's point, is that that's really something that we can review internally, and I think that's something that we need to balance with our mission and value with that ordinance, where perhaps an outside entity may not be as familiar with how we arrived at our own sign ordinance, because obviously we've got to balance business friendliness with also making sure that we're being consistent with our mission and value for the look and feel of Milton. So I would tend to either have that land use and the Economic Development Program near the top. But I have to say, I concur with Mr. Longoria from a tax assessment perspective, and this prioritization, I hope, doesn't mean that that goes to the bottom. I just think it's a function of, do we go to this grant for that, or simultaneously do we have another resource? Because I think it's equally important, two things is that, one, it could be revenue positive for the city. And also, it's a benefit to our citizens, because some of those assessments, it may be that you've got residents and/or businesses that are incorrectly coded to their detriment. And so it's a positive thing, not only revenue for the city, but perhaps revenue that goes back to our citizens. So I think as we prioritize these, hopefully we're not saying one's more important than another, just which of these may give us the greatest opportunity to receive the grant. So, I mean, they're all good ideas. Staff obviously put some thought into what was best to pursue.
I'd kind of like to pull the revenue one off of the list as it relates to this, what we're talking about tonight, because I think there's a better way to do it. Dan?
I don't think it really fits in with the qualifications for this grant, which are, you know, to assist local governments with making good long-term decisions about where, when, and how they should grow. So I really think that, I strongly believe we need to look at the revenue sources and make sure we're getting every penny that we deserve, but I'm not sure if this grant's the right place for it, like
And I'll tell you, when we came up with this list, we were just brainstorming away, so.
But it's a great one to say yes, still should be a priority, let's go for it.
Does that give you a little bit of direction?
Yes, thank you.
As an aside, I think in the past, before your time, we have at a work session or a council meeting asked for some thoughts about our sign ordinance. So as, you know, maybe we can kind of, you know, look into that as well and discuss it.
We have that top ten list. I think we've got it. So we've got it.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carter finally on.
Carter, you're finally on.
He's been waiting since last week.
Any last minute things we can put in? Should we push this the next week?
That's what I was going to talk about now. Well, mayor and council, following our discussion back in January about some changes to the traffic calming ordinance, I wanted to come back around to a couple of components of that that I think were outstanding and needed a little bit more discussion. The speed eligibility The speed eligibility criteria, the study area, petition percentages, and some provisions from the HOA, were some questions that I had taken from that last meeting that I didn't think had really been fully answered and wanted to bring back some additional information and hopefully wrap those up before we bring the ordinances forward. Now, the speed eligibility criteria was the one that we had discussed. Under the current ordinance, you have to have an 85th percentile speed of 10 miles an hour or greater above posted speed limit. In other words, 85% of the vehicles would have to be going 35 miles an hour or less in order to qualify under the current program. The consultant that we had hired to review this had come back with a recommendation modifying that to 3 miles per hour. And we really just felt like that was too low to really see any effective measures work on a speed like that. And so we looked at a couple of the other jurisdictions and had looked at Woodstock. And Woodstock was the one, if you remember, had a 30% or greater above the speed limit. Going back through our data, that really put us down into an 85th speed of 4, 4 or 5 miles an hour. And so we thought that was a little bit too low. Our discussion had been, and I think everybody's consensus was, it would be an acceptable range in the 6 to 7 miles an hour with that 85th speed. And so looking at that data, we came back and set really a 50% over the speed limit. So if 50% or more of the vehicles are traveling over the speed limit, it would qualify under our program. And really, where that put us with the data that we had was in that 6 to 7 miles per hour, the 85th speed, 6 to 7 miles per hour over the posted speed. So our options there, we could either set that as an 85th speed of 6 or 7 miles an hour, or use the 50% of the vehicles over the speed limit. My preference is the 50% over the speed limit because it's simpler. I think anybody going through the ordinance is going to, that's going to be a little bit easier for them to comprehend than trying to deal with the 85th speed. So I think that gets us where we want it to be. And you can see from this table that we would have five subdivisions that would meet that particular criteria. The Belatera, the Wyndham Farms, that's really where the border was. Both of those had an 85th speed of 6 miles an hour, but we had just a few more over that speeding threshold in the Belatera. Belatera? Belatera subdivision. So our recommendation on that would be to go ahead and utilize the 50% over the speed Do we want to discuss this as I go through, or just run through it and then pick up any questions afterwards?
I'd say let's run through it.
Okay. The other question we had was the definition of the study area. When we start looking at the percentages of who would have to file the petition, the study area defines the lots that would have to be considered under the petition application. So to give you an idea about how some of the other jurisdictions are looking at it, the Woodstock ordinance uses two criteria. Lots with driveways connecting to the affected street and lots on intersecting streets with no other outlet. And so they have, I'll look at the percentages here in a minute, but there's a different percentage of approval depending on where you are in the subdivision. Marietta's looks at, their study area would be defined as any lot that's likely to traverse the traffic calming measure. Paulding County used a platted subdivision. Entire platted subdivision would have to meet their percentage of approval. And then Sandy Springs really left it kind of wide open that the study area would be determined by Public Works. I don't think that would necessarily apply here. Their subdivisions tend to be older, they run together a little bit more, they're not quite as defined as what we had. We were looking more towards making the determination of, like Marietta, those lots that would likely traverse the traffic calming measures would be included in the study area. And so that study area falls back into the numbers of lots that would require approval before the application could move forward. So under our current proposal, 75% of the lots within the study area would have to be in favor of the traffic calming measures in order to move forward through the application process. Some of the others, Woodstock would have 67% or 2/3 of the affected lots on the street where the traffic calming measures have been installed, and then 50% plus one additional on the intersecting streets that wouldn't have any other outlets. Sandy Springs was 90% within the study area that Public Works defined. Marietta had a staged threshold, if your 85th is 10 to 15 miles over the posted speed limit, 65% of the study area would have to approve. If you're 15 miles an hour or more, 65% of the affected street would have to approve it. And then Atlanta and Paulding County both had 75% either in the study area or in the platted subdivision.
Let me, not to, I know we wanted to talk, to jump into it, but while we're here. Which, we, basically it looks like we've got two things to come up with in this, in this segment of it. One, what the percentage is, and two, what the study area is.
Yes, sir.
What, you're proposing 75% in the one coming forward, 75% in the study area?
That's correct.
Which, I may have missed, which study area definition did we use?
The Marietta version?
Okay.
So any lots that would be likely to traverse those traffic calming measures.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then we had some questions about the HOA and their participation in it. Under the current provisions, we had some discussion about whether or not, if an HOA wanted to pay for the entire traffic calming program for their subdivision, but they didn't meet the eligibility criteria, whether or not that would be acceptable. Our opinion would be under this that it would not be acceptable. If we were setting thresholds very high, maybe that would be something we would want to consider, but since our thresholds are relatively low, our opinion would be that if you can't meet those, odds are you may not necessarily have a problem with speeding in the subdivision, and maybe some other passive type measures would be appropriate, whether it's speed trailers, or additional enforcement, or education within the neighborhood might be more appropriate than actually, actual installation of traffic calming measures, that we would then be responsible for the maintenance of in the future. So that would be our current recommendation, and that's what we'll bring forward to you when we bring these revisions. The next one was whether or not the Homeowners Association could sign in place of an approved percentage of homeowners. My opinion on that would be that this would be one, since we were utilizing tax dollars to do these traffic calming installations, that we would want everyone to have their opinion heard in whether or not they were installed in this subdivision, rather than turning that responsibility or authority over to a homeowners association. Entirely up to the council, how they want to go on that one. There's no real guidance on that from state law or really any other jurisdiction, so our opinion would be that we would want each individual to do that. But if you so choose to have the homeowners association, which is actually the way it's written in the current code, then we can do that.
Okay, say that again? You're saying in the current code, we allow the HOA to speak on behalf of the homeowners?
Yes, we do.
Really? Okay.
So would they need to have the signatures before they ever came before us?
Well, they would never come before council.
And then before they, before they would, came to the city, would they need to have the required signatures already in place before they ever even?
Before we executed any agreement to move forward with the design and the construction. Yes, ma'am.
But they wouldn't need it before they came to do the study or anything else?
We'll get them into the process, and we'll get them started, and at least let them know whether or not they're eligible before they try and go back and.
But I guess who would bring that forward? Just the homeowners association would bring that forward, but they still need the signatures to actually.
That's right. The homeowners association could make application.
Okay, that's where.
But they would have to move forward with whatever our agreed upon percentage would be for the construction, actual construction of the measures.
Okay, and let me, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just want to understand the previous slide here. We go out, we're petitioned by a neighborhood. We go out, we do a study. We find out that 15% of the people that are passing through this particular neighborhood are doing speeds in excess of 50% of the posted speed limit. Okay? So we're proving that they're speeders.
Well, at 15%, that wouldn't meet the criteria.
It's not 50% of the speed, it's 50% of the cars.
No, I know, 15, my point is, if we're, if the cutoff point is the 85th percentile, and the 85th percentile has to be a certain number of miles above the posted speed limit. We know for a fact they're speeders at the 85th percentile, right? So actually, the number of speeders actually goes lower than that. But I guess my point is, we're documenting that there are speeders.
Yes.
The city is making an effort to document, oh, there, yes, there's speeding taking place here. Then we're putting up some additional criteria to say whether or not we're going to try to address that problem?
Through, through active traffic calming measures. You would have to meet certain criteria.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're not getting ourselves into trouble somehow by actually sponsoring the study that figures out there may be an issue here, so.
I think the question is, to what degree is there, is there an issue? And there would be certain measures that could be included, the passive traffic calming measures, which may assist those subdivisions that don't necessarily qualify for the full traffic calming program.
Okay, and the other thing is, if we use the Marietta, can we go back one slide there? The Marietta definition, which says lots likely to traverse traffic calming measure to access property? Oh, it's to access their property?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I was worried about, all of a sudden, you get cut through traffic, and you got somebody, you know, 6 miles away that's already, that's somehow impacted by a traffic calming device.
Yes, sir.
But that's not an issue. Okay, I understand.
It would be interpreted, and we can even clarify that, that those properties are within the subdivision is really how the ordinance is written.
Okay, so how does this work in an open road situation?
Typically wouldn't, because those speeds are generally above 35 miles an hour. So this ordinance addresses streets 25 and 30 miles an hour, which are considered more to be local residential subdivision type streets.
Right, so I mean, obviously, we can't have normal traffic calming measures. Well, we can't have speed bumps, I guess, or speed tables. We could have, you know, some of those other devices that you showed, but this is specifically to address the subdivision and HOA issue.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Julie, I think we had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Just in terms of clarity, and to make sure I'm clear in terms of what staff is recommending, is that, one, we need a policy so that we can deal with the requests that have been coming, because we really have needed to be able to prioritize based on public safety, whether there's a real speeding issue defined by Public Works, and then how we allocate citizen dollars that are collected through taxes, correct?
That's correct. This is actually a modification to an existing policy.
Right, but really to get some more clarity on it.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And so it's not that we're opposed to traffic calming or, but really, how are we going to define that so when folks come forward, we can say, this is really the policy, this is what you need to look at? I think to your point earlier about the HOAs, I would concur, I think it's important, whatever that measure is, that folks that live in the subdivision have voice, whether they're for it, whether they're not for it, but that there be a process that's clearly defined, as opposed to having a few, but that everybody has that opportunity where they serve on a board. So I think that the recommendations you made, at least just for this council member, I support your suggestions that the HOA needs to meet those eligibility requirements, that they shouldn't be out on our public roads being able to define their own, and that separately, that they don't need to be able to replace a standard process, because we really should be treating citizens equally throughout the city. So I just wanted to say that I commend your recommendations on those, again, just my personal position. From a safety perspective, measuring that balance between safety, and then obviously not wanting to have speed bumps everywhere if there's not really an issue. Was it the 50% that you were recommending, that if 50% of the cars were in excess by 6 to 7 miles? Was that the standard that you were specifically recommending?
Actually, it's if 50% are above the speed limit.
At all?
That's right.
Okay, not, not by the 6 or 7 miles?
That's right. And where we think that's going to get us, based on the data that we've already taken, is that will get us to that 85%.
To that 85%, right.
Is 6 to 7 miles per hour.
Okay, so it keeps it very simple, so it's 50%, whether it's a mile or 10 miles, and then on average, you're going to be at 85%. And that, based in, looking at all the different jurisdictions, was that ultimately your recommendation?
Yes.
Was that 50%?
Yes, ma'am.
And was that a combination of simplicity, but also because you think that's going to yield effectively the best end result in terms of where we really have a public safety issue?
That's right. Most jurisdictions do go by an 85th percentile speed, but a lot of people don't know what that is. And so looking at the data that we had, the numbers of subdivisions and where their speeds were, we felt like that, one, the 6 to 7 miles per hour over would get us into a range where some of these traffic calming measures would be effective.
Mm-hmm.
And two, didn't create a program that was so large that we just couldn't fund it.
Right.
No, I think a lot of that was born out of our work session discussion, you know, where we, where we looked at those numbers and you kind of backed into an easy formula to make that, our desires.
That's right. When we looked at the Woodstock, the 30%, it just, it didn't really work when we looked at the numbers that we had already pulled and the subdivisions that we had counted. It really did put us back down there at the 3 to 4 miles an hour on that 85th speed, so.
And in terms of the study process, can you just speak briefly? Obviously, any subdivision would have the opportunity to come forward and request it. How do we manage that process so that we're not chasing our tail all the time, I mean, from a Public Works perspective? Is there some sort of criteria that says, okay, guys, we know you've got a request, but rather than to go and spend X number of dollars to run a test over three days, or, and maybe you can speak to how many days you would actually out be trying, be out tracking numbers of speeders? I mean, how do you manage that process at the front end?
See if I can back up to my process here. We'll typically count over a one-week period.
Okay.
So the applicant's going to come in and make a request for these traffic calming measures. We'll go through all those criteria. We have a volume criteria, 400 to 4,000 vehicles per day. We have a speed criteria that has to be a 25 to 30 mile an hour type roadway. The percentage criteria, the 50% or more speeding, to try and determine whether or not they're eligible. So we'll, we'll post our counters generally for a week. That's a relatively simple process. May take, Roddy, somewhere in the neighborhood of 2 to 3 hours to set the counters and download the data. What we have seen so far, I don't see a huge number, I don't see the program being overwhelmed, but it would certainly be done on a first-come, first-served basis.
Right.
When they come in, we will try and give them an idea about the timeframe it'll take us to get the counters installed and the data downloaded. And it may be a couple of weeks before we get to it, but.
And that's part of my point, is I think we just want to make sure that whatever we ultimately decide on, is that we're setting reasonable expectations so that when the program goes out, that folks don't anticipate that if you've got 10 subdivisions that say, ooh, you know, I want to be all over this, that they don't all expect to have the results within that first week. So it's just a probably.
And we'll try and work with the applicant through that initial application process so that they understand, one, what they're getting into, and, two, the timeframes associated with it.
Right.
At this point, I think it's a manageable process for it, for us. And if, if it becomes such that it's not manageable, we'll certainly bring forth some changes that we think would, would help us on that.
And my only other question, and it's probably not for this evening, but it's kind of levering off of what Mr. Longoria was mentioning, is what, beyond the 25 to 35 speed limit, obviously, we've had a lot of discussions collectively, individually, about what we can do when we look at the rest of our roadways within Milton, because not all of us live within subdivisions, and obviously, a lot of our citizens are concerned. But if we could separate from this particular program, also kind of get back to, and I think also, it's one of the things we've talked about in work sessions historically, whether we prioritize it for maybe our retreat, or maybe at our March work sessions, to say, where are we when we look at our applications to the Department of Transportation about reducing speeds on certain roadways? I know that's an annual process. Maybe we could talk about where we are in that process. I know some of those applications were met with positive reductions of speed, but not all roadways. So maybe as we proceed over the next couple of months, or maybe even sooner, we could go back to that list, see where we were with that prioritization. I know that some of the roadways that were initially submitted for reduced speeds, it wasn't as though they came off the list entirely, it's just that they didn't first meet with that first wave of reduction. And I would hope that we're continuing to go back to the Department of, Department of Transportation to pursue that. I know that there was also some discussion about us having some more collaborative interface, maybe with some of the district folks. When you look at how the districts were divided within the region transportation, from a transportation perspective, that Cherokee and Northwest Fulton were divided rather unusually. And so that, was it District 7? I'm, I'm reaching back.
We're 7 and Cherokee's District 6.
So that District 6 and 7, because we're really part of the same region, but we, that some of those channels were separate, so if we could maybe get an update on where we are in some of those conversations, I think it would help us to start to address what we do about speed concerns outside of just subdivisions.
Well, I think that would be good, and this is, we're going to see this on the March, was it first, meeting? And this is, we're going to see this on the March, was it first meeting? Is that what we're looking at?
It would probably be the second regular meeting in March.
Okay. Well, we can, we can, if we've got any other questions or comments. Bill?
Carter, going back to your survey of the, what, eight, three, six, eight subdivisions, is this certified information here? Is this certified data? Can you proceed from the data that you have here?
I think we would recount these.
Pardon me?
I think we would recount these. Generally, we would say the count would be valid for a six-month period, and we're outside of that. So, we'd certainly look at...
This is all information that we collected, is that true?
This was information collected back before I got here, probably February of last year.
I think Roddy collected it, didn't he?
They had somebody do the counts. They weren't done in-house.
Okay.
So, this is, these are accounts that we've had on the books for quite a while. So, the list could certainly change based on new data.
And we can also utilize those counts and speeds and all that kind of stuff for a myriad of other things. It's not just, I mean, it's, it's more stuff to put in the file to rely on.
Never hurts to have the data.
Okay. Go ahead. Alan?
Carter, you're saying that for an open road neighborhood, that is, that if the speed limit were 35, would they then be able to solicit for this? Or does that have to be below 35?
It'd have to be below 35. This would be targeted to 25 and 30 mile an hour roadways.
And are there any examples of communities around the country that have used this, used traffic calming in open road type settings, especially, especially communities like us that have limited east-west connectivity?
I can't say that there haven't been. I, I think the examples that I've seen where they start using the traffic calming measures on roads, the collector-type roads, the 30, 35, 40, 40 miles, 45 mile an hour type roads, the conditions are somewhat different. They may be more urban, curb and gutter type, a little bit better mobility, ability to take alternate routes than we may have. So, I don't know that I've seen one that is similar to us, but I don't know that it's not out there. We can certainly look and see if there are other communities more similar to Milton that may have used those types.
I think what we have is, I think we're all concerned about speed, whether it be in a subdivision or on the open road. I don't think any of, with this ordinance, we're not saying they're not issues on the open road. And it, but it's two, it's apples and oranges, even though the, the, the problem may be the same. So, hopefully, we can, after we get this one put to bed and we can take some things out of this and maybe look at something that is, we're going to have to perhaps craft and see what we can do to help in some of these open road neighborhoods or, or, you know?
You would certainly look at different measures than what's being proposed in this ordinance. We have our four details that we've put together.
Sure.
To address these that wouldn't necessarily be applicable to those types of roads.
So, they're apples and oranges, but it's something that, and I know that, that everybody on your staff and Chris is aware of the concerns that folks have on open roads. So, maybe that's something we can, you know, start looking into when we can check some of these other things off the list. So, one, okay, well, everybody's one last. But Karen, Karen hadn't spoken yet, so I think that's how we're supposed to do it.
I got a last question.
Now, I will, I'll keep it very brief. I think this is a great first start to try to literally calm some traffic in our neighborhoods. But I do want to see us look beyond this to, if you look at where our worst accidents are and where lives have been lost in the city of Milton, it is not as much in the neighborhoods as it is on the open roads. So, I do believe we have got to address that, whether or not it's just, you're buying some of those mobile things that tell people how fast they're going, because I think, I'd like to think most people that are speeding really don't have any idea how fast they're going, though I'm sure some of them do, and that will just make them speed up. Whatever we need to do, I think this is a great first step policy, and I'd like to see us expand it to make sure it does include the open roads that are 35, 45 miles an hour.
All right. Last call. Bill?
I have one that is a little bit different, but real, I was just going to say that for young driver education, and really, not for tonight, but I think it ties into all of this, and it speaks to, you know, mobility of speed signs that we can move about, but I also would love to get an update maybe from police and public safety, just in terms of what we can do proactively, what we are doing, especially since so many of the schools have removed driver education. I'd love to see us help to sponsor through public safety proactive education with our young people, because we lose too many young people to our roadways and other council members' points. Oftentimes, those lives are lost not in subdivisions, but out on our open roads, and I think that we've got to start with education. And if we can be part of that proactive measure, I'd be happy to do anything I can to help see us in our schools proactively. We talked a little bit about it last year, and what can we do before, you know, students graduate, and we're in February, graduation doesn't happen to the end of May. I'd love to see us initiate something, anything that has to do with better educating our young people and their parents, but primarily our young drivers as to what we can do in our particular community. Because I think education will save a lot of lives without spending much money at all. So...
Bill? Thank you.
Just a quick question and Chris, refresh my memory. Did we purchase a speed trailer or two-speed trailers last year, or were they stationary?
Well, what we've, yeah, what we purchased was speed signs that they, they're transportable by a big truck and about four people every time you want to move it. So, yes, they, they were signs that could be moved, although they were signs that every time we moved them, we needed a whole crew and feared the risk of breaking the sign. So, we found more permanent locations for those signs that they're effective, and we installed those at the school zone at Summit Hill Elementary is where those signs went. We're looking at a grant opportunity at this point for a mobile, a mobile speed trailer, something I'll bring forward to you in the, in the budget for next year. I do think we need one. They're not terribly expensive. And it might even be something at mid-year that, to have a couple in, in our arsenal would probably be a very good expense. At this point, we did budget and we did procure the ones that are now in existence there on Providence Road. So, I don't have just an empty line item that's waiting to buy a, a new one. Depending on the functionality of those particular things, they run somewhere between $10,000 and $19,000, depending on how much you want it to do. If you just want it to measure speeds, they're about $10,000. If you want it to be a variable message board that will be used as a speed trailer in most circumstances, but then have the ability to say, road closed, construction ahead, kind of a multipurpose trailer, they, they get up in that $18,000, $19,000 range. But still probably something that is very advantageous and worthwhile for, for our city. I think we need to get away from, unless we find a location where a permanently fixed sign makes sense, and if we do, then we need to do something different and do a permanent fixture with solar panels so that it stays powered and all that good stuff. But I think right now, we really benefit from, from something that was a little bit more mobile.
What's the cost of a permanent sign versus the mobile, the, not lower than that $10,000?
Well, again, it depends on what you want it to do. In the neighborhood, $8,000.
Okay. So, not significantly different?
Really, the same technology. One's just built on a chassis and one's not.
One can move and one can't.
Yeah, you're, yeah. The bulk of the expenses is the componentry and the radar and the LED and all that good stuff.
Those eligible to be purchased through grants?
Occasionally. Occasionally, we'll see a grant that, that one qualifies for, you know, and it's typically the public safety grants that, that you see. Unfortunately, there's nothing unique about a speed trailer. So, you know, when you, when you put yourself in a grant application pool with a bunch of other people, there, there's nothing wowing about a speed trailer anymore. I mean, they're so commonly used. It's not like we, we'd be starting something new. So, it, it probably, in, in the spirit of giving one out there and getting a couple out there on some sort of a, of a program, I would anticipate, and I don't want to forecast what y'all will see in the budget amendment in April, but you could probably guess that that, that will be in there.
Joe? Carter? I would ask that you really consider the whole approval process to this thing as either leaving the ordinances that we have on the books right now, that the HOA can, can help make the decision for the, its community, or define 75% a little bit better? Because we've lived through this twice in Crooked Creek, where we asked for speed bumps, and the problem was the 75% number that was given to us, I think this was Fulton County at the time, it wasn't even Milton, included all of the residents. In other words, if only 50% of the residents voted and they all voted for it, that would still not pass. So, 75% looks like it's a reasonable majority figure, when in reality, it becomes something that's oppressive and, and just can't be met because of a number of different reasons in terms of people that want to, you know, stand up and, you know, speak their mind and vote on those kind of things. So, I would, if, if you feel real compelled to say, hey, we need to change the, the rule that's on the books right now, I would drop that down to maybe a simple majority and take into account the people that participate in the vote and not all of the affected homeowners, even those that don't care to get out and vote for that kind of thing, so.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question as it relates to that? Is it fair to say that once a subdivision approves one of these measures, that then effectively, the entire community is assess the cost? How to, I'm just trying to understand the cost impact.
Well, there's, there's a...
Is there a split between what the HOA might pay for, or we're paying 100% of them, or it really depends on the situation?
That's going to be up to the applicant. It'll be a 50-50 split with the city. And so, how they...
Depends on which measures you guys recommend for a particular scenario, correct?
You know, if, if through whatever process they have, they want to assess the entire community for that, then that would be up to them. If they want to assess only those that we have defined in the study area, they could do that, too.
And I guess that's...
That'll never happen. Just so you know.
Right.
The poor treasurer at the HOA doesn't have that capability. He just has to assess everybody.
Well, and, and that's where I'm coming from, is that if ultimately, if everybody doesn't necessarily have a voice and yet they're going to be the ones receiving the bill, somehow, we've got to balance those two things, and so...
HOAs are used to that right now.
No, I know. But I, I do think that with this, just because we would effectively be legislating some of those rules, is that we still sometimes have to represent those that may not come forward to vote because they ultimately get the assessment. So, I, I just think somehow, we've got to balance that, and maybe it would help on some of these if we knew that option A through, or A through D, one through four, if we knew kind of what that cost might be. You know, what, what could a cost be, especially if you're a smaller neighborhood, you know, because you're not sharing it with as many people? And it may be that when we look at approval, maybe, and we've talked about this historically, maybe the approvals need to be different depending on the size of the subdivision. Because suddenly, if, if you've got only 50% and you're in a large subdivision like Crooked Creek, and only 50% come forward to vote, but you've still got 50% of those that are going to bear the cost, that may be different than a scenario where you've got a subdivision that's only 50 people and 25 of those...
Right. But at the very beginning of all this, the HOA volunteers and petitions the city to, to have this done. So, so they got to get some kind of movement in the HOA to make it happen in the first place. So, it's not like we're, the city's coming down and saying, no, this is going in and you're paying 50% and tough luck. So, so this is all volunteer stuff in my mind. That's why I think we need more flexibility.
And I think we, we have two in our previous discussions, that you have a ballpark of what options A through D are, are going to call. So, you can, you can discuss some of these things, and you will with these different associations, before they necessarily have to submit their $500 fee and then realize, oh, that's all we had. You know, so I think we can, can get those. And we can, I know Alan hadn't had a chance to speak yet, but we can ask any questions or, or anything and have our discussion, further discussion when we do the ordinance. Alan, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. With regard to the, the recommendations for the policy, I think it's important to mention that just because, you know, if every neighborhood in Milton was approved for this, doesn't mean that we're going to have money to pay 50% of the first one. So, I think that's important to point out, you know, especially to the citizens that are here and those that are watching, is that, you know, just because you're approved doesn't mean the city, the taxpayer money will be used, because we may not have that money. And it does seem, although we're not voting tonight, it does seem like we do have a majority that are, that seem to be in favor of the 75% petition requirement. You know, being an HOA president, I can tell you that, you know, that's not going to happen. You know, maybe if you had 20 people in your neighborhood, maybe, but the large neighborhoods that we have in Milton, I don't think it's going to happen. Most covenants require two-thirds. I know Mr. Longory mentioned, you know, a simple majority. I would think at the very minimum, we would do two-thirds, but that's just my opinion. I mean, if this were to come forward, I would, I would be supportive of it, but I think in light of the, the size of the neighborhoods that we have, I think two-thirds would be more than reasonable. And in terms of, I think, you know, part of the, the good thing about me going last is I get to hear the themes that all the rest of you say. But I think a theme right now is that we need to do something about our open road neighborhoods and, and trying to do something for those. You know, I'm thinking in my mind, you know, is this going to be something that can be done in open road neighborhoods? No, it's not practical. We're not going to put speed bumps in all of our open roads, because that's going to